I was a very ignorant parent who knew very little about the funding crisis our schools were facing. It only came to my attention when Mary Sandell appealed to parents at the school, asking, 'Why aren't we doing anything about this?' But I started looking into it and I found Annabelle. Through research, I found out the scale of the situation as Annabelle has outlined. Put simply, I found that Wokingham schools are the worst funded in the country. I found that our schools are being forced to cut subjects due to lack of money. I found that teachers are leaving schools and are not being replaced. I found out that some of our local schools don't have enough textbooks for our children to study from. I know that our schools have been highly achieving despite their terrible funding, but our schools won't continue to do well if the levels of funding continue to drop. The grades will drop also. And yet, the Department of Education will tell us that schools are already receiving record levels of funding, while they most certainly are not here. Our aim when we launched the petition several months ago was to urge the council to do everything in its power to persuade the government to improve the level of funding for our schools in the borough to prevent their financial situation becoming unsustainable. That aim has now shifted. It's shifted because what we thought was a less than perfect situation is in fact a disastrous situation, and we are already at crisis point. As Annabelle has said, one teacher has recently resigned citing the funding crisis as her main reason. When you have a head resigning as she feels she can no longer deliver the education that children deserve due to lack of funding, that screams of disaster to me. And when you see another local head teacher on the national news admitting her school is already in deficit by £28,000, that is so alarming. I know that you are aware of the desperate need of our schools. As parents, we call on you as our council to find some form of interim funding to help our struggling schools, whether they are LEA or academies. Funds are needed now. And long term, we would like to see a resolute council, one who will not rest until they have secured increased fairer funding for our schools. Our persistence as parents is to ensure our children are not short-changed and undervalued. Your persistence as a council is absolutely critical to effect that change. Thank you.
There will no be a debate on this petition, not to exceed 30 minutes unless someone wishes to propose an extension.
So Mayor, given the quality of the petition and the questions that have been asked tonight, we apply Rule 4212 to suspend the rules of procedure and apply Rule 421130 relating to the period of time allowed to extend to one hour.
Do you have a proposal for us? Councilor Horsall, second to the council, thank you. Do you have a photo number? Surprised we are unanimous. Okay, who wishes to speak? I hope you've seen them, but I hope you've probably seen them back. Got cards, haven't you?
Thank you, Mayor. I have lived in the borough for over 30 years, and during that time, I brought up three children, all of whom have received an excellent standard of state education. One was science-inspired, she went on to become a teacher and now works in the state school in the east end of London, and has done for the last 10 years. I now have my first grandchild, who lives in the borough, and I fear along with the other children of the borough will not receive the standard of education we owe to the next generation to cope with the changing world. This is due to the low level of funding for schools in the borough when compared with others around the country. Behind the high level of pupil attainment in Wokingham, there are more mixed levels of pupil progress, a factor emphasised in the more recent Ofsted inspection framework. Local authority risk assessments of schools have therefore driven there are fewer schools which would now gain Ofsted outstanding outcomes. We are aware of these issues, and as such, we track pupils' progress efficiently in the borough school. We want to give the dedicated time to identify the pupils who make insufficient progress. But without the money, we cannot support such target interventions. In addition, we have areas of deprivation in the borough. Education in the borough needs to make a difference to increase the nice chances of those in the deprived areas and to narrow the gap between the pupils who get free school meals and those who don't, which is a key concern of Ofsted's current thinking. Wokingham is currently part of a pilot area that Ofsted are looking at with regard to these issues. In essence, our schools do well despite poor funding and could do even better for our students if the funding was matched by that of other authorities. Thank you.
Ms. Rotherham, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think tonight will go to be one of those strange nights where mostly the chamber agree, and I'm not sure I can take it.
You'll be free to sit down if you wish, ma'am.
I'm going to have my five-minute stand. All right, sorry. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a forum in London on fairer funding with MPs, the National Audits Office, and other important people. The message from the platform was that whatever we said, this was going to be imposed on us. They chose not to hear that it was not so much the formula that was the problem, but the amount of money in the pot, which would mean schools cutting spending, probably by reducing teaching staff. Many governors, including me, spoke and pointed out what this meant for us. My school is set to lose almost £200 per pupil, but our pleading fell on deaf ears. It also caused concern that five of our Tory MPs, only one has understood and supported this, at least publicly. The government position is that the budget is a higher figure than ever before, but what they don't say is that there are more pupils, more pupils with EAM, in English traditional language, more special needs, and the money has to be spread more thinly. In Woodbury, schools are set to lose a huge amount, Lud Rivermead, the highest, of over £400 per pupil. That's a primary school, not a secondary school, which could be several teachers, whether they're teachers who have many years' experience or nearly qualified teachers. We need them all if we want our schools to remain good or outstanding, and I know that we do. They need to be properly funded. Doing more with less will not achieve the standards that we both want and have seen in previous years. Now, we all know that we are the worst-funded authority in the country, and in my naivety, I welcome fairer funding. But how can fairer funding for us be less funding than we have now? I really can't accept that our four MPs, including the Prime Minister, believe that what they are doing to the schools in their constituents is unfair. Perhaps our moving English language has changed the meaning of fair, and I've not noticed. We all need to work together, whether we're parents, teachers, governors, or councillors, to change this situation for our schools. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, my apologies for I was late at the beginning, so at the one-minute silence. I would just like to say a few words regarding the incident in Westminster. My tribute to the victims of the horrific terror attack yesterday in Westminster, where our work is only about 100 yards away where the incident happened. Only a few hours away, I was exactly at the spot actually where the incident happened as well. And it's a beautiful place, Westminster, and it's a beautiful part of the great, great capital. And it really could have been any one of us in that. I'd just like to say this attack was cowardly and depraved. There is no justification for this act whatsoever. The best response to this outrage is to make sure we come together in solidarity and not allow the terrorists to divide us. This is a criminal act. The culprit, whichever ethnic group, faith, race, wherever they're from, they should be treated as such. Now, I'll come to the motion. As a member, I'm actually proud of the fact that the Wokingham schools are some of the top schools in the country. Despite continued central budget cuts, Conservative-run council has continued to make education a priority and invest in schools' buildings as well as boosting resources. I'm sure members don't need a reminder that Wokingham council is the lowest-funded council in the country. Despite sport from the council, the schools are facing financial hardship and have had to limit their offering as a result of the poor funding. As a result of the limiting resources, the schools are having to reuse posts and operational commitments, forced to ask parents for voluntary contribution for activities, teaching assistant posts are being cut, and classroom support is being reduced, pupils' experiences narrowed, as off-site activities and residential are having to be stopped. Pressures on provisions for special educational needs are also being affected. Schools are currently struggling to maintain facilities such as grounds, pitches, pools, ICT equipment, etc. Over half our schools are now having in-year deficits, and this has increased significantly in the last 18 months. And in 2016, we had six schools with licence deficit, both in primary and secondary, the total sum nearly £575,000. Also, in NOA report, they actually criticised, which was published in 2016, they criticised the Department of Education for not having a sustainable school funding programme in place. So really, it's not a Wokingham issue, actually. It seems nationally, we have a national sustainable school funding problem. I personally welcome moves to national funding formula for education, but this can only succeed if there is sufficient funding for all schools and academies. Without that, the introduction of the formula could deepen the financial disadvantage already faced by many schools. And lastly, I'd just like to end, Mr. Mayor. We want to give our children the best start possible so they can realise their full potential. As a result of this funding formula, majority of the schools are likely to be worse off as a result of this. Therefore, I urge the Secretary of State to actually stop and rethink on this issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Horsall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start by congratulating everybody who's been involved with this petition for their hard work in publicising a crucial, local issue and for coming here tonight and presenting so well. It's an issue which, for once, I think councillors, all political persuasions agree on, that we cannot go on in terms of funding like this. And unfortunately, the new funding formula is proposed, and we're not the only ones who are not happy. Over the weekend, there was news of a Tory rebellion against the new formula, and for once, a Conservative MP has said something I agree with. Lady for Catterley, Sandbatch, I don't ask who she is because I've never heard of her before, but she has said something extremely sensible to Sky News, which is that this new formula doesn't seem to address the fundamental inequalities that there were in the previous formula. So I would say this fails in its job, and it has to be looked at again. The problem that we have is that even if the government does come up with a better formula, it will not come in time. Our schools need more money now. I believe Charlotte, when she says she's been working hard on this, I know she has. And I know councillor Linsky mentioned, he's concerned with colleagues have done things, and we'd like to reassure all of you that Liberal Democrat councillors, and in fact, I'm sure the Labour member, and those of local parties are also concerned about this. We have also been doing our bit, you've heard from Beth already, what she's been doing, and we have responded to the consultation on the national funding programme. But whatever has been going on, it has not made any difference to the government. They have continued to put money aside for setting up private schools, even for transporting pupils to those private schools. And they've just announced £320 million for new preschools. That wouldn't be so bad if those preschools were providing places that were actually required, but a lot of them aren't. It's a complete waste of money that should be going on basic need places for our children and to fund our schools properly. Meanwhile, while this has been going on, parents in Wokingham are being asked to pay for things which elsewhere are considered essentialist. Teachers being made redundant, the curriculum's being cut, class sizes are getting bigger. We need, as a community, to shout louder. And one way to amplify our voice is to join in with others. Up and down the country, parents and councils are remorseful, and we need to join together to make such a noise that we cannot be ignored any longer.
Commissioner Horsall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I made my speech, I too have been lobbying. I had the privilege or the merit of talking to our Prime Minister four or five weeks ago for an hour and a half on a variety of subjects, and I did raise this with her, so she is aware of our concerns about this. It is interesting that this particular issue, fairer funding for schools, has managed to do something probably that nothing else apart from war has ever actually done. That has brought together every single political party, although those who have not been part of our political party together to say the same thing. History will tell you that that's hardly ever happened. It happens at wartime. Maybe we're at war. Maybe we need to be at war to actually get better funding for our schools. Now, some of you may know that I too am a governor. I've been a governor of Addington School for over 10 years now. I believe it's an amazing school with an amazing reputation, and arguably, I probably would say this, the best special needs school in the county. So I'm especially interested in the impact of poor funding for these high-need and special educational need children. However, it's not just this specialist school that cases for these children. Mainstream schools also can be the hope for such children, the difference being the degree of their educational requirements. Local schools are now struggling to meet the needs of pupils with these significant levels of special educational needs with dedicated support staff. One result of this is an increased incidence of pupils being placed in expensive special placements, often at a distance which inevitably incurs transport costs. So there's a knock-on cost for not doing the right thing in the first place. The council, through the Schools Forum, has sought to make funding available to schools on an early intervention basis. I've been told that the budget for that is now overspent by 50%, and the budget for special school placements is overspent by 20%, that's £1 million. These overspends in turn place pressure on the mainstream schools' block funding, creating a vicious circle of tightening resources. We're seeing more placements needed, notably in key stage one, and the average cost of each is rising. Other local authorities are experiencing the same problems. This isn't bad management, it's a ticking of time bomb. The government simply have to listen to us. This situation is simply not sustainable. Our children deserve much better. Finally, can I recognise the fantastic efforts of all our schools and their staff in maintaining a high educational status across the borough? Despite being the lowest-funded per pupil authority in the country, and despite all these pressures brought about by the lack of money, their dedication is exceptional. But as with the council, with reducing the government grants, it is getting more and more difficult to maintain this. I totally support this petition.
Thank you. Commissioner Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My council pays, my children were educated at the Holte, and I had a granddaughter educated at the Coombs. I can only say they're excellent schools, they've got very good education, and I thank the council for that. I think the council has an admirable record in providing education for children in the borough, and I do support this petition with all heart and heart. One of the problems where I represent in Arborfield is the Coombs School, which was internationally renowned, ended up going to special measures, and is now going to become an academy. The same background that that is was the inability, part of the inability to retain a permanent headmaster. It seems to be getting better now, but there were certainly financial issues there as well. And there is no doubt that the funding now is not what it should be. I support any initiative that goes for fairer, and I mean not just fairer, I mean more funding for foreign schools. I think if you're my age, you don't owe it to your children to give them good education. You don't owe it to your children's children. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cholwell, please.
I'm pleased to be able to support this petition, and together with a number of my local colleagues, we've even been up trying to get signatures. School funding is an issue for everyone, whether we have children of school age or not, and no one refuses to sign the petition when we ask, once the reasons are explained. In a recent daily mail survey, RG6, that's most of early, was voted 10th place, best place to live in England. I've always known that, but it's good to get it confirmed. Apparently, we secured a spot on the coveted list due to affordable living, general quality of life, short commutes to work, and in particular, are good schools. Though we have achieved such high standards, it's down to a number of reasons. Catchment, dedicated school staff and governors, parent involvement, and of course, the offices of the Education Department of this council. Our schools have been in a position of poor funding for many years, so have exhausted options for making further sustainable savings without damaging or compromising on school standards, quality of teaching, breadth of curriculum, resources, and limited training. Let's give a simple example. We have three primary schools in our ward. One, Early St Peters, is on the border with Reading, and also attracts children living in Reading Borough, which starts literally just over the road. Made early comprehensive catchment area is set across both boundaries. Officers advise that the age-weighted pupil unit is probably the best factor to compare between us and Reading in the financial year 2016-17. Funding for Wokingham schools is set at 79.75% of the total funding allocated, and in Reading, they give out 82.03% of their funding through the AWPU. So the difference is, in simple terms, about 10%, or some £310 per pupil. Thus, a school located just over the other side of the road in Reading Borough would receive a further £310 per pupil, yet it is Reading's children we are helping to educate. Why the discrepancy? This isn't fair. Nor is it reasonable that we should have to subsidise Reading in this way. That is the job of Whitehall. Enough is enough. Our schools deliver a high standard of education but receive the lowest standard of funding in the country. And additional money is needed now to prevent their financial position becoming unsustainable, as well as in the longer term, when the national funding formula is eventually introduced.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferris, please.
Thank you. It is pleasing to have the support of the ruling group regarding school funding. We have been reminded many times that we are the lowest-funded authority in the country. So it comes as an unpleasant surprise to find that the council has employed a number of senior staff on temporary contracts. Ten of these are costing the council over £550 a day, including an assistant director for learning achievement, who has cost £780 a day for the days he has worked, and that's for nearly three years. Whilst many of these temporary staff do not work full-time, his extravagant costs come at a time when Wokingham Borough Council is facing its greatest impacts, both financially and in staffing. We're concerned that so many staff are employed in this way. How is this happening? Who has authorised his staff, and how much does it cost? Perhaps if the council were being more pro-bro, it may be in a better position to assist our schools and even retain our school post and patrol service. This shows there is more to do within the council. However, I do not want to be trapped from our schools without doubt. They have been poorly funded for many years, and a serious increase in funding is urgently needed before I have to cut staff and subject stores. This would have a detrimental impact on our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Horsall, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this petition. I'm a governor of the maintained schools in my ward, which are small primaries. A national funding formula and a fair distribution of the education budget in principle is good. WBC has one of the lowest-funded, our own, P. The large swing of funding to deprivation, nearly 20% of total funding, negatively affects the funding of schools in less deprived areas such as Wokingham, and particularly in my ward. Small schools have many of the same overheads as large schools. The lump sum has historically provided a mechanism for distributing funding towards smaller schools for this region. To achieve the increased funding in deprivation, the lump sum has been reduced by 37%, which of course has an increased impact on small schools. The funding formula, where money increasingly follows a disadvantaged child, effectively transfers money away from the small schools, especially less deprived areas, and towards larger schools in more deprived areas. It is difficult to see where these shortfalls will be made up. New schools. The impact of building new schools on the designated schools grant. WBC has a growth fund of £1.3 million in its dedicated schools grant to fund new schools. New schools incur major costs before the normal funding system allocates age-weighted pupil units of funding through the school census. In its first year operation, the new school needs expensive senior staff, appointed before the beginning of the financial year to plan it. After April, teaching staff are appointed by them to be in place for September's new pupils. In October, the census provides information for funding, which will go into the school's budget the following year. The national system does not fund these 18-month upfront costs and relies on funds allocated to the LA's. Those costs are met from the DSG, and therefore, new schools are subsidised by existing ones in the LA. The significant growth of Wokingham's population in high numbers of schools means that our schools are disproportionately impacted by this. In effect, therefore, new schools are subsidising existing ones. Wokingham's preschools are tangential to our basic need for school places in terms of where they're geographically. One of them effectively replaces a school which has been closed owing to lack of demand and remains a uniquely small contingent of schools. In semi-rural and rural areas, Wokingham several small primaries, in our context of low funding, these schools are hard hit by diseconomies of scale, and proposals for a national funding formula will not help, particularly with lump sum for schools subject to CAP. I support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Troy.
Thank you very much, and it's great to hear everybody's supporting the petition. And I'd like to start off by saying thank you to everyone who's given up the time to come along here this evening, and in particular to Annabelle and Redshaw, and I think obviously Lindsay, and all of these guys. Really done an amazing job bringing this to all of our attention. I want to keep my contribution quite simple. This petition asks us to do two things. The first thing it asks us to do is to find more money. So the questions must be, where does that money come from? That money will not come precisely like it came in the different one. That money will come from the autumn budget. So although the consultation ended yesterday, the real fight, the real struggle, is the extra money that our schools need. The real fight and the real pressure we need to be putting on the municipal power will come in the end up to the budget. If we get it right in the budget, we can fix this. It's going to be too late. Head teacher Mary Sandell, and it will be too late. Other head teachers are taking early retirement. It's going to be too late for the children who are already seeing their educational opportunities reduced. But if we don't get it right in the budget, it won't just be a worsening of opportunity this year, it will carry on. Earlier, someone said it can't get worse, it can get worse. It's predicted to get worse nationally. Nationally, budget is funded in about three billion pounds to keep our schools treading water. Locally, our schools over the course of this parliament face an approximate reduction in their purchasing power of about six and a half million pounds. That is the scale of problem we have to fight. That's the first thing, the money. The second thing is, what does this council, what does this petition ask the council to do? This petition asks the council to take an action. As councillors, our job is to make sure the council, to make sure the executive, to make sure the executive acts on that action and to make sure they report back to us. The executive is accountable to all of us here, we are sent by the electors in our boards to keep the executive accountable. So at the end of this petition, there will be a motion, we get a chance to vote on a motion. I hope that that motion includes a specific requirement that the executive be accountable to council, that the executive report back in every council to tell us what they have done. I don't expect, given the attitude of some of our MPs, that they will make that much progress, but we need to see, the petitioners need to see, and the people out there in the rest of Wokingham need to see, that the executive is being held to account by us, that they are trying. It's no good saying, yes, they're trying, we need to know exactly what they need doing. If we fail to do that, we will have failed not just as councillors, but more importantly, we will fail our children.
Thank you. Council Lee, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just pick up on that point, I don't think it is purely for the executive. I don't think it's for anybody in particular, it's for all of us. And the one thing a child would love, a child would really like to see is, instead of having a fifteen hundred man petition, I would like to see everybody writing to their MP. So no good sending a petition to your MP. What frightens MPs is when a lot of people get up and take trouble to write. We have four MPs, one of them is the Prime Minister, and you need to write to all of those people. And we as a council, I would propose to send a copy of this video of tonight's proceedings to all of our four MPs, and also to Justin Green, I would send it to, I think it's Q, who is the Liberal Education spokesman, I'm sorry, I can't remember who the Labour one is. We all have a responsibility here. And also, I'd just like to mention, I was speaking to John Redwood today, he had a meeting with Justin Green this week, he was supposed to have a second meeting with her yesterday, but we're all aware of what happened in Westminster. So I would please urge everybody in this chamber, officers, every member, the executive, and all the residents who you can contact to write to those MPs. I don't believe there is anybody here tonight who in any way disagrees with what we're trying to achieve. But we're not just the lowest funded in education, we are the lowest funded in central government grant, we are the lowest funded with the social care grant. It is despicable what this council gets, and it's time that we all rose up and actually challenge government. So I please do that, it's not just for Charlotte, it's for everybody here. And if everybody writes, don't send an email, put a little stamp, help the Royal Mail, they like a bit of business, put a letter in the post to those four MPs, and to Justin Green, Justin Green, and they don't half react, and a lot of people start picking up. And I will personally be doing my bit. I'm not a governor, but I've got a wife, and it's all for our teachers, and I hear constantly from them, so I would propose that we all do something, that's everyone who's here tonight, and all the people you can contact to do your petition. A petition carries very little weight, I'm sorry I said. It's like a petition on planning, has no weight, you've got to hit with material issues. And a material issue for MPs is, we will vote for you again if you don't get your act together.
Council, let them in, let them in, please.
Good day, everybody. I'm a grand thing in this council, and I actually went to school in Wokingham. I'm glad to see that, oh, 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 that's kind of you, right? I'd like to do this one. I'd like to see that, as S E N students and children with additional needs were mentioned earlier, because I would include myself amongst that at that time. And when I see schools being starved of funding, it is the most disheartening to the children who are most affected, the problem for two weeks will suffer the most, particularly Especially those unprivileged backgrounds, it tends to personally, they will do in less affluent areas. It's not the children whose parents have the dry time of learning to spend on extra activities and extra tutoring, it's the children whose parents just get dry, they're the ones who will suffer the most. How are our children, how are our teaching staff supposed to feel safe, supported and valued, when there are less staff around and a lack of basic equipment? No one of the people are leaving the profession. How are children supposed to learn to add art, music, or even things like food technology or, um, common subjects such as that if they are being cut? What kind of systems are we creating for the future? And how are our schools supposed to step up, step up to meet the demands of a rapidly growing, rapidly growing population theory in Wokingham? Every time I come to these meetings, I hear the rhetoric of, low spottest borough. I certainly don't believe our residents are really any better off than everywhere else in the country. So why are we not fighting for our fair share and doing more about it? So I echo Dave's words, it's like, keep the pressure on, please. Thank you.
Council Lewis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This first line will surprise anybody, when I say I would like to thank you all for your petition, and I welcome it. I see it as supportive of the work that we've done and the work that we are doing in lobbying our members of parliament and ministers. And your petition actually strengthens our argument for the government to honour their twenty fifteen manifesto, which stated that they would make schools fairer, funding fairer. Regretfully, despite an encouraging statement made by the Prime Minister's office on the twentieth of January, in response to Devon County Council's petition, there's not been a government announcement about the results of DSG formula review. The assumption would be, I was referring to where we are today. But that extract was taken from the minutes of the F40 Executive Committee meeting held on the sixth of February two thousand and ten. The F40 group describes itself as a representative organisation of the lowest funded education authorities in England, is currently chaired by a Conservative councillor, with a vice-chair, a Labour MP and a Conservative MP. The group has been in existence for over ten years. Unfortunately, in ten, ten years, funding remains an issue. In fact, I would say probably that's too soft a word. We know that the Labour Government, the Coalition Government, and the present Conservative Government have invested in schools. But the problem is that none of them have been able to find a funding solution. The government, the government has highlighted research that shows that people's prior attainment is a tool to identify schools needing extra funding. Deprivation is another factor, in fact the biggest additional feat factor. I don't think anybody with this agreement would be, must say that these high needs pupils are deserving of additional funding, but surely our working people pupils are also deserving. We know that working is seen as affluent, but a council that is well managed and is successful, in many ways penalised for its successes. Whilst it's true that more working of schools will gain than lose as a consequence of the current funding proposal, potentially a gain of three percent, the national funding formula does far too little for our underfunded schools. Speaking to head teachers, there are real challenges around recruitment, retention, improving teacher satisfaction with their jobs. I know that because my son's constantly having that discussion with me, because he's a teacher as well. For a long, for far too long, our schools have managed. Not only have they managed, but in a majority, they have delivered good and outstanding outcomes. Our schools enjoy extraordinary support from parents, and that's evident here tonight, and from the wider community. And this petition really demonstrates this. We as a council must do whatever it takes to persuade governments to not only improve the level of funding, but demand that our pupils are treated equally and not be disadvantaged because our schools are coping. And I want to echo what David said as well, you know, we all need to pay part in this, and write, and lobby.
And you're one, okay.
I'm just going to say, I support the petition wholeheartedly.
That's well called, that's well done. Thank you. Uh, Council Jones.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. We are very lucky here in Wokingham, our schools offer very good quality education. We should congratulate everyone who works in education in the borough on what they achieve on our behalf. But we have a problem. We are the lowest funding unitary authority in the country for education, and we have been for some time. Without improvement in funding very soon, our schools are going to have to lose teaching staff. We're going to find it harder to retain new teachers, who after a few years in the job will become disillusioned and see a commerce and private enterprise offer better financial rewards. We're also going to find it harder to offer a broad range of curriculum that is vital for a balanced education service. John Redwood, Wokingham MP, every so often promises that he will get results. Sadly, he doesn't get the results that we all want, and he says he'll try again next year. But it's very good to hear from David Lee, the Deputy Secretary of State, this week. The government can always find extra money for free schools. Why can't they find it for councils like Wokingham to spend it up on our schools? Our elected representatives who have discussions with central government have got to get better at doing their jobs, and have to find more time to be banging on the doors of ministers to get a better result. It's great that this petition is getting cross-party support, but what are those who speak to central government going to do differently to get a different result from that which they've got in the last few years? I look forward to hearing what our League councillors, officers, and MPs will do differently in the rest of two thousand and seventeen to get more cash out of the Department of Education. Doing the same thing just isn't working.
Council Paul, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Surprisingly, I was the first chairman of our local education authority in nineteen ninety seven eight, and during that year, it was well known both locally and at their Department for Education, that their funding formula discriminated against small unitary authorities such as Wokingham. Due to our lack of deprivation, we received significantly less than Reading Borough Council to the norm, despite a much higher deprivation factor, even though we provide for education for most of the children in East Reading in our local and early schools. Working schools perform better than Reading schools, and even when they educate working children, which shows that the current weighting towards deprivation does not necessarily result in better education outcomes. In addition to deprivation, our neighbouring authorities of the East receive outlandish weighting, which decreases the salaries at schools to compensate for these increased housing prices. However, Wokingham has higher housing costs, over five hundred and thirty-one thousand pounds on average than our neighbour to the East, Bracknell, who has only three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and they get extra money for their teachers and council staff. And yet, to this must be added the real cost of travel, as well as buying a home, employers' costs, which are not included in our funding formula. I want to pick up a comment about temporary contracts. Our temporary assistance for extra education has helped to maintain our outstanding performance of our schools and to provide excellent education for our children, despite the harsher austerity regime. I also want to comment that school budgets are currently reinforced. There was a time, as many of us, some of us here will remember, when some of the council tax actually went to support school budgets, but that was changed, and so budgets are now provided as a reinforced grant by government, and we have simply passed that money on to schools. We do have a subsidised, as has been said already, the educational schools grant for two point four day million, which shows our commitment to schools and our education system. We, I, will continue to press for our housing costs and our housing costs in Wokingham to be included in our funding formula for schools, and I will lobby to this effect. However, I suspect the current proposals for school funding will likely be dropped due to the current level of opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rochelle, check it, do that.
I welcome the petition. Why does Wokingham receive less funding than every other area in the country? Are we richer than Chelsea? No. Richer than any of Shires or Surrey? No. It's the perception that parents care about their children and are willing to pay more to enable their children to succeed in life. However, not all the parents are able to do so. Perhaps this is why many of the teachers have to buy pens, rubbers, and materials for their classes, actually soon to be larger classes if the central government has any idea of say yet. Also, what about redundancies and unfilled vacancies that result in the lack of funding? What are we planning to do about the children that these people would be teaching? Wokingham is known for its good school results, but they're not going to continue if the schools don't have funds to provide teachers, learning assistants, and teaching materials, as well as supplies for the children. I've been a school governor for a few years, and I've seen schools unable to replace teachers because of high cost of housing, lack of funds to pay for appropriate salaries. Is this what we want for the children who are working here? I don't think so. So far, despite many misses to the seemingly caring local MPs, including the PM, all we've gotten so far is lip service and no real action. Perhaps they are, a U-turn is coming again, but we don't know yet. Or perhaps they're too obsessed with grammar schools, which the local council doesn't really want. Or another problem across the channel that we seem to be having at the moment. These people should be representing Wokingham, and I agree with David Lee, we should be sending letters to all of the MPs and informing them, we won't vote for them, just a note though, we haven't voted for them in the past anyway, and we never planned to. So I just thought I'd leave that as an everthought for you. Thank you.
Did you write, did you write to them?
Yes.
Oh. Last but not least, Council Hossel, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just want to start by thanking you, and I'm thanking you, Rachel, for organising this petition. I know there's many hours coming in the streets and bringing the community together for this really vital and important issue, and bringing it here tonight, and as you'll see, it has a crossbench importance, and it has brought a great deal of attention to this, to this very vital issue. I want to continue raising awareness to this issue. I have done a lot of work for it in the past, but much more work needs to continue going on. We have here in Wokingham been notoriously, and not for good reason, low-spotted authority in the local, in the whole of the country. The average funding per pupil that we receive is not just low, but in fact diminished. Take, for example, our nearest neighbouring authority, which is the Reading Borough Council. Pupils there on average will receive three hundred and thirty-six pounds per pupil more every year towards their education, and in Slough, it's six hundred and sixty-nine pounds. Worse still, in the city of London, which actually really isn't that far away from here, they'll receive over double what we receive for our pupils. Look at it another way, if you have an average-sized secondary school of one thousand five hundred pupils in an authority with high funding formula, you could expect to receive in the region of half a million pounds more per year. This could pay for an extra ten teaching staff. Imagine what we could do without here. Simply put, funding formula is broken. For months and indeed years now, I've been asking our MPs and ministers and the past Secretary of State and the new Secretary of State to listen to us and specifically address the issues that we have here. And indeed, John Redwood was going to be meeting with Secretary of State just yesterday at two o'clock, but unfortunately, due to his, that happened, his meeting was postponed. Just a mile or so away from here, next door in Bracknell, Berkshire, Bracknell, schools receive London fringe allowance. We do not yet, we do not. Yet here, our costs for living are significantly higher, our costs for recruiting teachers are significantly higher. It's a simple message that I have taken to ministers and MPs and to the Secretary of State, asking them to consider us for the London fringe allowance, and I will continue to do that, because I think it's right and it's fair that we should get it. It's a simple message, and we must continue to pick the drum for this. Councilor Lee has said, we can all take this message to our MPs. We must do this, we must write to the Secretary of State, continue to do this, write to all of our ministers, write to our local MPs. Unfortunately, in ten, ten years, funding remains an issue. In fact, I would say probably that's too soft a word. We know that the Labour Government, the Coalition Government and the present Conservative Government have invested in schools, but the problem is that none of them have been able to find a funding solution. The government, the government has highlighted research that shows that pupils' prior attainment is a tool to identify schools needing extra funding. Deprivation is another factor, in fact the biggest additional deep factor. I don't think anybody would disagree with me when I say that these high needs pupils are deserving of additional funding, but surely our working for free pupils are also deserving. We know that working is seen as, as affluent, but a council that is well managed and is successful, in many ways penalised for its successes. Whilst it's true that more working for free schools will gain than lose as a consequence of the current funding proposal, potentially a gain of three per cent, the national funding formula does far too little for our underfunded schools. Speaking to head teachers, there are real challenges around recruitment, retention, improving teacher satisfaction with their jobs. I know that because my son's constantly having that discussion with me, because he's a teacher as well. For a long, for far too long, our schools have managed. Not only have they managed, but in a majority, they have delivered good and outstanding outcomes. Our schools enjoy extraordinary support from parents, and that's evident here tonight, and from the wider community. And this petition really demonstrates this. We as a council must do whatever it takes to persuade governments to not only improve the level of funding, but demand that our pupils are treated equally and not be disadvantaged because our schools are coking. And I want to echo what David said as well, you know, we all need to pay part in this and write and lobby.
Can you wind up?
I'm just going to say I support the petition wholeheartedly.
That's well called, that one up. Thank you. Commissioner, go.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. We are very lucky here in Wokingham, our schools offer very good quality education. We should congratulate everyone who works in education in the borough on what they achieve on our behalf. But we have a problem. We are the lowest funding unitary authority in the country for education, and we have been for some time. Without improvements in funding, very soon our schools are going to have to lose teaching staff. We're going to find it harder to retain new teachers who after a few years in the job will become disillusioned and see a commerce and private enterprise offer better financial rewards. We're also going to find it harder to offer a broad range of curriculum that is vital for a balanced education service. John Redwood, Wokingham's MP, every so often promises that he will get results. Sadly, he doesn't get the results that we all want, and he says he'll try again next year. But it's very good to hear from David Lee to be seen as Secretary of State this week. The government can always find extra money for free schools. Why can't they find it for councils like Wokingham to spend it up on our schools? Our elected representatives who have discussions with central government have got to get better at doing their jobs and have to find more time to be banging on the doors of ministers to get a better result. It's great that this petition is getting cross-party support, but what are those who speak to central government going to do differently to get a different result from that that they've got in the last few years? I look forward to hearing what our lead councillors, officers and MPs will do differently in the rest of 2017 to get more cash out of the Department of Education. Doing the same thing just isn't working.
Commissioner, go.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Surprisingly, I was the first chairman of our local education authority in 1997/8, and during that year, it was well-known both locally and the then Department of Education that the then funding formula discriminated against small unitary authorities such as Wokingham. Due to our lack of deprivation, we received significantly less than Reading Borough councils, but also, we had a much higher deprivation factor, even though we provided education for most of the children in East Reading in our would-be early schools. Working schools perform better than Reading schools, and even when we educate working children, which shows that the current weighting towards deprivation has not necessarily resulted in better educational outcomes. In addition to deprivation, our neighbouring authorities to the East receive outerlands weighting which decreases the salaries at schools to compensate for these increased housing costs. However, Wokingham has higher housing costs of £531,000 on average than our neighbour to the East, Bracknell, who has only £375,000, and they get extra money for their teachers and council staff. And yet, to this must be added the real cost of travel as well as buying a home, employers' costs, which are not included in our funding formula. I want to pick up a comment about temporary contracts. Our temporary assistance for actual education has helped to maintain our extended performance of our schools and provide, to provide excellent education for our children, despite the harsher Ofsted regime. I also want to comment that school budgets are currently reinforced. There was a time, as many of us, some of us here will remember, when some of the council tax actually went to support school budgets, but that was changed, and so budgets are now provided as a reinforced grant by government, and we have simply passed that money on to schools. We do have a subsidised, as has been said already, educational schools grant for £2.18 million, which shows our commitment to schools and our education system. We, I, will continue to pressure our housing costs and the higher living costs in Wokingham to be included in our funding formula for schools, and I will lobby to this effect. However, I suspect the current proposals for school funding will likely be dropped due to current level of opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rochelle, Shepherd, debate.
I welcome the petition. Why does Wokingham receive less funding than every other area in the country? Are we richer than Chelsea? No. Richer than any of the Shires or Surrey? No. It's the perception that parents care about their children and are willing to pay more than they will their children succeed in life. However, not all parents are able to do so. Perhaps this is why many of the teachers have to buy pens, rubbers and materials for their classes, actually soon to be larger classes if the central government has any idea. Say it. Also, what about redundancies and unfilled vacancies that result from the lack of funding? What are we planning to do about the children that these people would be teaching? Wokingham is known for its good school results, but they're not going to continue if the schools don't have funds to provide teachers, learning assistants and teaching materials as well as supplies for the children. I've been a school governor for a few years, and I've seen schools unable to replace teachers because of high cost of housing, lack of funds to pay for appropriate salaries. Is this what we want from the children in our Wokingham? I don't think so. So far, despite many misses to the seemingly caring local MPs, including the PM, all we've gotten so far is lip service and no real action. Perhaps they are, a U-turn is coming again, but we don't know yet. Or perhaps they're too obsessed with grammar schools, which the local council doesn't really want. Or another problem across the channel that we seem to be having at the moment. These people should be representing Wokingham, and I agree with David Lee, we should be sending letters to all of the MPs and informing them we won't vote for them. Just a note though, we haven't voted for them in the past anyway, and we never plan to, so I'm just going to leave that as a thought for you. Thank you.
Did you write to them?
Yes.
Go on. Last but not least, Commissioner, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just want to start by thanking you, Annabelle, and thanking you, Rachel, for organising this petition. I know it's many hours pounding the streets and bringing the community together for this really vital and important issue, and bringing you here tonight, and as you'll see, it has a cross-venture force and it has brought a great deal of attention to this very vital issue. I want to continue raising awareness to this issue. I have done the work a bit in the past, but much more work needs to continue going on. We have here in Woking Borough been notoriously, and not for good reason, voice-funded authority in the local, in the whole of the country. The average funding per pupil that we receive is not just low, but in fact diminished. Take, for example, our nearest neighbouring authority, which is the Reading Borough Council. Pupils there on average will receive £336 per pupil more every year towards their education, and is now at £669. Whereas still, in the city of London, which actually really isn't that far away from here, they'll receive over double what we receive for our pupils. Look at it another way. If you have an average-sized secondary school of 1,500 pupils and you're authority with high funding formula, you could expect to receive in the region of half a million pounds more per year. This could pay for an extra ten teaching staff. Imagine what we could do without here. Simply put, funding formula is broken. For months and indeed years now, I've been asking our MPs and ministers and the past Secretary of State and the new Secretary of State to listen to us and specifically address the issues that we have here. And indeed, John Redwood was going to be meeting with the Secretary of State just yesterday at two o'clock, but unfortunately, due to the incident that happened, his meeting was postponed. Just a mile or so away from here, next door in Bracknell, Berkshire, oh, Bracknell, schools receive London Fringe Allowance. We do not yet, we do not. Yet here, our costs for living are significantly higher, our costs for recruiting teachers are significantly higher. It's a simple message that I have taken to ministers and our MPs and to the Secretary of State, asking them to consider us for the London Fringe Allowance, and I'll continue to do that because I think it's right and it's fair that we should get it. It's a simple message, and we must continue to pick the drum for it. Commissioner Lee has said we can all take this message to our MPs. We must do this, we must write to the Secretary of State, continue to do this, write to all of our ministers, write to our local MPs and bury them in mail about this. In just nineteen days, I'll be meeting the minister who's responsible for education, and I'll be taking our solid evidence and our case to say that without improved funding and financial support for new funding more global for Woking Borough, whether it is fair funding or whatever it may come, in whatever form, even if they drop the fair funding, the Woking Borough schools, simply without it, will not be viable anymore, they won't be sustainable, and outcomes to children and young people would be adversely affected. It's a simple and clear message which I think our ministers just simply can't ignore.
Thank you. Rachel, Annabelle, you have three minutes to reply to Mr.
Two years ago, a head teacher from another poorly-funded area said, as a head teacher, I believe only parents would really be heard in this debate, and head teachers would be overlooked and labelled as not managing their budgets effectively. So here we are. The current situation has continued for far too long now, and the impact on our schools is far too great. We are one of the richest countries in the world, yet we are facing the biggest real term cuts in a generation. The government's Education Funding Agency, top tips for financial planning in January 2016, states that education is key, but that funding should be used properly. School leaders were advised to limit pupil-to-teacher ratios, teacher-to-support-staff ratios and the curriculum. They're encouraged not to worry about non-staff costs, i.e. photocoping, which made up only a small percentage of the budget. However, if education really is to be key and funding to be used properly, we need to have sufficient funding to provide that education. We want fair funding for all our, for our schools with a large pot of money so that all our schools are financially sustainable. We do not want to be taking money away from other schools. To show your support, we would ask that we work to go across party in an endeavour to get the funding for our area that is so desperately needed now. Our campaign has strong links with the National Parent-led Fair Funding for All Schools campaign. To reflect your assistance, we request that the council write to every head teacher and ask them to make their parent community aware of the national campaign, highlighting that with pupil funding going down everywhere, the new formula will solve nothing for Wokingham. We can supply you with a template for this letter should you require one. We would also urge the executive members to reiterate to head teachers the message of our petition and urge them to write to their MPs. As parents, we will not allow our children's education and future life chances to be stolen from them. This is not an educational rehearsal, there are no second chances. Please do not underestimate how hard the parents will continue to fight and the lengths we will go to to secure a broad and enriched education for the future of our children. And we would like to thank all the council members tonight for all their comments and their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I need now to ask for a proposal to be...
Sorry, do you want to... I suggested that we make an add-on to that. I'm not sure if anybody would like to agree to that, but we send a copy of tonight's video to all those MPs, and I would ask also that our Liberal and Labour colleagues fix a copy, send to their shadow secretary's. I think it is important, and I would also actually like us to agree tonight that every member of this council would also write an individual letter to the minister.
Charles, not filling your hat as up, sir. Proposal.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to make your proposal for motion. If I may, and may I read it out? Thank you. I propose that our motion reads, in response to the petition titled Fair Funding for Woking Borough Schools, signed by over 3,500 residents, we, members of Woking Borough Council, will do everything in our power to persuade central government to increase the levels of funding that our borough schools receive from the national funding formula. Our schools deliver a high standard of education but receive the lowest levels of funding in the country. All organisations and schools need to continue to strive to be as efficient as they can be. However, additional money is needed now to prevent our financial position becoming unsustainable. Educating children has justified an associated cost. Schools in wealthy areas in the country with very high living costs such as Wokingham need improved financial support to safeguard their livelihoods.
Do you have a second for the proposal? Commissioner, rather, if you speak.
No, I don't, Joe.
Thank you very much. Do people need the proposal handed round? Okay. So, Commissioner, rather, if you speak.
I second the bid, Chair, and I think it's now time.
Excellent, thank you. Can I put it to the vote, the motion then, please? All those in favour, please, yeah? Surprised we asked you that? Or not surprised we asked you that?
Have to take it back.
Are you?
That's wrong enough, doesn't do enough.
Okay. That motion is carried. The question is, I'm particularly concerned, Lee, if I was to do, sorry, Dave.
Mr Mayor, David Lee did make a comment, he was shortly writing, so can, can we take that a bit further, perhaps, from yourself and the chair to recommend it to everybody, and to send us all the names and addresses of the MPs so that we all know who to write to, and take it off the table?
I'm sure that will be done.
If it goes to website, schoolcutstot.com, you can do all the processes, please.
Thank you. Yeah, people asking questions are free to go if they would like to.